Just to let you know Penny, I noted what time all those emails were sent last night. I forgot which one it was now, I thought we had found them.
Good afternoon ladies and gentlemen and welcome to this cabinet meeting unusually for us, not only in an afternoon but on a Friday rather than a Tuesday. But of course the issue we have before us for this special cabinet is very time sensitive as any proposal that we might choose to submit to government for local government reorganisation has to be submitted by Friday of next week. I will start with apologies for absence, do we have any instructions?
No, I see today Jane.
Thank you. I have no announcement.
No Jane.
Are there any declarations of interest? I believe not. So we move on then to the substantive items might implore on your agenda to receive report number 106 stroke 2025 Local Government Reorganisation. The recommendations in this report are 1.3.1 for cabinet to agree which proposal for local government reorganisation most strongly meets the statutory criteria and provides the best means of ensuring long-term financial sustainability and high quality sustainable public services for Rutland and 1.3.2 for cabinet to endorse that proposal for submission to the Secretary of State. I am removing those recommendations in order to open the debate and will introduce the item. The recommendation before you is to agree which proposal for local government reorganisation most strongly meets the statutory criteria and best meets long-term financial sustainability. It's worth reminding ourselves that the government was quite clear that Rutland had to reorganise and that an authority of about 40,000 people would not meet its criteria which was a local authority of about 500,000. It is also worth remembering that we are not in the Lincolnshire Invitational area which comprises Lincolnshire County Council, its district councils and the unitary councils of North Lincolnshire and North East Lincolnshire. And therefore we are not in a position to submit a proposal for Lincolnshire. Had one or more of the Lincolnshire authorities proposed including Rutland then we would of course have considered the option but this did not happen. At the council meeting last night members were split between doing nothing apart from writing to the Secretary of State to tell him to leave us alone which given the government's criteria was simply acknowledging the Secretary of State would decide our fate without us expressing a preference to steer his decision. Our residents told us they want us to be in a financially stable council going forward. That means being in a council area less heavily reliant on council tax. It means being in an area with more business rate income and opportunities to increase council income. The question is which option does this best? Our residents and our councillors last night also told us they were worried about the reduction in the number of councillors and the resultant distancing of residents from their council. A reduction in councillors is inevitable given the boundary commissions views on maximum size of councils but the options before you are not equal in terms of the proportion of councillors to electorate. Last night we also heard very strongly and not for the first time how significant to people of Rutland place is the Rutland identity. And again, all three options that we have before you talk about that in different ways, one in terms of neighbourhoods, the other, sorry, two in terms of neighbourhood and one in terms of a committee structure. But it's up to you to decide which describes the concept in terms that will help preserve the sense of place for Rutland and Rutland residents. And so what we're deciding this afternoon is whether to put Rutland's name to an option or whether to simply let the Secretary of State decide with no idea of Rutland's preferences. And speaking personally, I feel we need to be quite clear what our preference is even if it might not be the ideal. So having introduced it, who would like to speak please? Oh sorry, I need a second to motion. Thank you councillor Johnson. Councillor Ellison.
Thank you very much. I possibly should reiterate last night and how difficult the whole process is, really competitive and I found it really difficult to assess fairly. The lack of financial detail makes it very difficult. And I said last night I'm very grateful for the Saskia Finish Group and the appendix, was it 105 2025 showing the strengths of each of the proposals, that was very, very useful. And as the Chair said, it's difficult to compare and contrast because they are different proposals but at the end of the day I think the one that probably fulfills it close to what we are concept and idea for the future would be the North City South. But my other concern is what's the cost going to be and I'll leave that floating. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ellison. Councillor Powell.
Thank you. Before getting into a discussion of the options, I think I would like to, yeah, I think the meeting last night, I think I would like to thank all the councillors who participated and I think there was a lot of points raised and I actually am proud to be a Rutland councillor and I think the comments that were raised, the way it was conducted were exemplary and particularly thanks to all the work from the Saskia Finish Group of scrutiny because having that framework and that detailed analysis as councillor Ellison has said actually really helped to frame those proposals and to actually help us make those comparisons between the options on the table, so a big thanks about. I think we, a year ago, the words local government reorganisation hadn't entered our vocabulary and I know everybody here and officers as well to thank them for all the work they've put in to working up these proposals, all the meetings and working groups. So I think Rutland has done itself proud in actually analysing, looking at what the options are and really working through what we're faced with. There was quite a lot of the points raised yesterday evening that I would concur with this sort of sense of frustration that this has been done to us as a county whereas actually we perform very well in lots of areas, in our unitary, as a unitary authority, our prevention services, you know, managing our budget, we do very well. So the feeling that actually this is being forced upon us and is not from our, is not from our work making. The other thing I think came across that, the concerns about the lack of local accountability. But I think it's up to the existing council and how we take that forward, we're obviously not debating that at the moment and we're not debating the fact whether local government reorganisation will solve any of the issues with local government in terms of funding for special education needs and for vulnerable people and adult services because we're rearranging the boundaries here and in terms of what it might cost. That's not what we're debating but I think that did come through from the debate last night and I would, yes, just to confirm to, I think that was all very well expressed and I think we need to actually acknowledge that whole context. There was some mention of actually putting Rutland's case forward in terms of what we do do well perhaps to government and I personally would support some sort of letter or acknowledgement that actually that goes alongside whatever proposal we decide to endorse. I'll perhaps come back later looking about particular proposals but I wanted to say that first of all.
Thank you. Anyone else on screen now? Sorry, I saw councillor Brown and councillor Smith.
Thank you Chair. I'd also like to say I was very impressed last night at the, at most of the comments that were made by councillors, there were substantial contributions and very relevant ones and it made me think, I took notes on most of them and as far as I could see from the submissions that we were given, the financial stability was the main point that most of us concerned it. The democratic deficit was clearly an issue that was substantial. And also the lack of guidance to give us and the lack of time to be given to enable to work these through to the benefit of everybody concerned. We looked at the city situation and by consensus of everybody that was there and it's my view as well, that we were just peripherally mentioned, there was no substantive benefit. It was basically about how they wanted to expand and how they saw themselves in the future. As far as I could see with the county council submission and I can agree with other people last night, it was basically about their reliance on how we were going to make cuts that would appeal to the government and we were merely a bolt-on to their application. What I was disappointed was the willingness to abstain. This is a major issue for all this county, it is probably one of the biggest decisions that members will make in their political history with this council. Although it was not a decision that was of any force, it was illustrative, it's still a decision that I think the residents would have considered was right that members made a positive statement, they made a positive decision on what was on offer, not simply to leave it on one side and abstain so as to maybe gain some political advantage in the future, that's how I saw it. I don't think we can ignore the situation that we have and that is the three options, we have no other options, we're not included in any other elections. The only option that seemed acceptable that to me and to a lot of other councillors that had considered our opinion, worked with us and we had contributed to was the North City South. We have to do in the end of the day what is best for our residents on the options that we are offered. We can't go fantasising on other alternatives which are not there. On that basis alone, I think it is, the only option that is available to us is the North City South.
Thank you councillor Smith.
In a similar vein to my cabinet colleagues, I would also like to thank all of the members of the discussion last night and that obviously wholly engaged with the options that have been put forward for us and also I thought the squeaky Saskia Finish Group was particularly helpful in our thoughts. This is a decision none of us want to make. As has been pointed out, we'd like to stay as we are and that came through quite strongly in survey. However, I don't think we have an option. And what we want is, or we don't want it, the least worst option and we don't want to put Rutland at risk by making no option. One of the points made in the discussion was that Rutland needs the integral part and not just an add-on to one of these options. And I think as a unitary authority you could have quite an influential role. I also heard that because we would have a whole council of a much larger population, democratic accountability would be issued. And that really beat the point about neighbourhood areas and that was much more developed I thought in the North City South proposal than in the others. And it's important, I think as councillor Wallace said, to preserve a sense of place and influence. In the survey, finance was the number one concern. And I think again, the North City South proposal has much more developed about council tax harmonisation. Unfortunately, there's a lack of detail in all of the options about savings that could be achieved. The other point that came across probably, and again, this was in the survey that was done, was to document identity and keep our ceremonial status. And actually in option two that the government put out, that is said to be, will be kept too. Criterion three has, it has been good, high quality public services and we do have high quality public services in Rutland. We should be proud of our achievements, we have a good model of social services. And again, social care is included in the proposal by North City South more than in the others. I think also, we should perhaps think about possible advantages of going into a bigger authority. Economy, greater employment, council tax harmonisation is very much stable, you can come down. And again, I think this fits North City South option. So as I said, unfortunately we can't say the same and I think the North City South is the least worst option for us. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Weiss.
As usual, by going last, these officers more or less said what I was going to say and I think councillor Johnson might be picking me for the last one. I agree with councillor Powell that it's fair to say we don't deserve to be here, we run a tight ship, we're an exemp la authority on many fronts and would wish to remain independent. And I think I also agree that the meeting last night was very keen that we make our feelings known that we would like our identity retained in some way. However, if strategic authorities are aware the big money is going to go, they are going to be cleaning off a large amount of highways, transport and planning income, we would not remain as we are now. What we're responsible for and what we have the money to do would change. And I do wonder how little Rutland would survive in a, I don't know how many million, strategic authority and that, that does worry me. We also need to be very careful about the representativeness when people are saying my residents say. We are of course listening to the most vocal residents and not all of us are hearing the same messages, some of us are getting very different messages about who they want to be with. Many of those messages, those opinions were voiced before they had read any of the bids and in fact some people are still voicing things having never read a bid and I think we need to be very careful about that. A lot was mentioned last night about our loss of democratic input because of the loss of councillors. We also need to be aware, there are a lot of district councils in Leicestershire that are facing the same thing. We're not the only ones that is facing a reduction. They are equally well worried about losing their identity. Some of those districts have thought themselves, has had an identity for a long time. And I do wonder if that's why the North City South bid, because it involved those same district councils, had a stronger sense of recognising the identity of its component parts. And for me, better served that part of the recommendation about sustainable public services for Rutland because they were also worried about sustainable public services for the North West and sustainable public services for Melton and sustainable public services for Market Harborough because they were all worried about their own part. And as such, I felt put together a stronger argument. I was not convinced about the county council's argument of the benefits of scale, I felt that that was in danger of just cutting everything for the safety of the economy. I liked the North City South emphasis on the neighbourhoods and how they were going to look after us. We have also heard about how we have not got a lot in common, if we think about the North, North Leicestershire and Rutland, there's not a lot that we have in common with the North West at Leicestershire and Galton. But I haven't got a poem unlike last night. But I would just like to say that if I had a rugby team of fly halves, I wouldn't win many scrums.
Thank you very much. Councillor Johnson.
Thank you Chair, I might come over on the mic, I should be. Yes, I wanted to attend last night's council meeting because I wanted to understand the quality of the debate and the views that were there and I was interested in the thought about Rutland still trying to be Rutland. And although I think Rutland does actually do smaller as better very well, the common sense argument in me says that if we simply fail to put a bid in because we protest about the whole thing, then that's just going to be totally ignored. I think it's not better for us to be adult and express a preference than it is to throw the toys out of the pram. In terms of the quality debate, there were two emphasis, emphasis yesterday which were really on about Rutland and I think, I think we can preserve Rutland's identity but it will be up to us to make sure that happens. So the neighbourhoods in Rutland and the councillors that serve Rutland will need to make sure that they help us preserve Rutland's identity. I also think that we've, you know, got a period of time between now and when the changeover is due to happen and during that time we should make sure we take every step we can do, whether it's prosaic or whether it's actual, to make sure we preserve what is Rutland because it is defined as an area of England and it has a, it has a quite distinct characteristic of it. And I, I think that's definable and to a degree protectable. The argument about representation is obviously true in the sense that we're a small county council and we've got 27 members and the average size of the ward is very low compared to the target size of ward in the new authorities. But I think that's just a question of mathematics and I suspect what the government will want is that there is an evenness and equality about the number of residents per council, per councillor, and I think that's really just about representation within the new combined authorities. So in terms of last night's debate, I thought it was useful, I don't think that it has absolutely changed my mind, I think it's added to where I thought I probably was in some ways and has given some nuance which is useful. In terms of the proposals before us, Leicester County Council's proposal, I find frankly a bit arrogant in the sense that it just assumes that the larger is better. And I don't actually think that's the case at all, I think coming from a smaller county like Rutland, I think we appreciate the ability to identify and I do not think that larger is better. I also don't think that a dominant authority in a future strategic authority is not a good idea. I think it's really important, I'm assuming government will be thinking of, the role of each constituent authority in a strategic authority. And if any one particular authority dominates, that will be very difficult. So I, I'll say a word about the savings that the Leicester County Councillor appeared to be identifying in a minute. Leicester City's proposal, I found very Leicester City centric, maybe unsurprisingly, but it was very much, this is what we want and actually we don't care that much about everybody else. So I don't particularly think that that deals with the issues for residents, I think it, I think again, it was, it was sort of arrogant in its own way. And I think those two proposals taken together, whether you might prefer the larger donor or the smaller donor, whether Leicester City expanded or not, what that, what those proposals together both do is say, if you take one of these proposals, all you're going to do is preserve the old hierarchy and the old way of doing things. And I think this is, this is an opportunity to shake things up slightly better than that and I think we need that because if we are going to change in the way it's proposed, we need to make sure that we do look at things with fresh eyes. The North City South proposal, I think is the most professional of all of them, it's not surprising maybe because it was brought out with a really good, a good steel of cooperation between the authorities involved and I think it shows, I think it's very professional, it's in effect of prospectus, it's written as such, it's very approachable, it explains things very sensibly in plain English and I think it comes across extremely well. I think because of the way that it takes the old Leicestershire and it splits it up, it's absolutely much preferable to keeping Leicestershire County Council. It gives slightly lower size of authority than the government has said is ideal but I think it's, I think the sizes of authority are within the boundaries of, within the scope of being realistic. I think it would be important, as I said before, any one authority doesn't necessarily dominate in a new combined authority. In terms of the benefits arising from merger or consolidation or whatever you want to call it, I think, I think it really is to be very careful with the way the financial benefits are calculated. Not surprisingly, given my interest as a portfolio holder for finance here, I'm always quite interested to see how, how people approach things like savings because when you make savings, you should also make sure that you are transforming the process of the way you do things in order to... of the way you do things in order to make sure the savings are sustainable and that you improve your ability to extract the savings whilst providing residents with the service that is required and wanted. And I, I think, again, Leicester County Council's, uh, sort of, we can say the most faithful with the best proposal, is a bit shallow. I don't think they demonstrate really that they've, they've got as much experience in transformation frankly as, even weight now. I know the numbers are smaller, but actually the number of norths doesn't matter. What matters is the way you do things. And I, I, again, I think Leicester City's proposal is just very Leicester City centric. And, and so all we hear about is getting more, more residents and more councils out, it appears to me. If I'm slightly cynical about it. So I, I think the way the North City South proposal looks at savings that are potentially there is a rounded proposal. It talks about neighbourhoods, it talks about working with people, it talks about transforming services in order to extract savings, which is exactly the right, the right process. It talks about prevention, uh, all, all the right elements to, to make sure that you hit your targets and you provide the services you want. And Rutland has got good experience in achieving those. So, uh, overall, I think the ability to extract benefits whilst making sure residents have the right service is really very important. And therefore, I, I, I come down quite clearly on the side of the North City South proposal. In terms of the debate last night about writing a letter to the Secretary of State, then I think, I'm, I'm supportive of that because I think, I think that would be quite useful because it would, it would just set out the position that we have. And, and I think it keeps us on the right adult side in that we are engaging, but we are also saying, look, we're not going to be here. We think we run a very good authority, thank you very much. And, uh, we think that there are dangers in the reorganisation that either you're not recognising or you're not admitting to recognising. And that there, there will be work for five to 10 years to come and beyond that will echo from all these changes. That's, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Powell, you want to come back in?
Can I come back in? Again, um, I think it's interesting, the debate about identity and that did come through very strongly from residents. We could have a very large philosophical debate about what makes identity. But I think, as other colleagues have said, um, doing what we can in this area in terms of the, you know, retaining the ceremonial status as an element of that and other matters that we, that we can do, I think should be highlighted and that did come, that was in, in, in the bid. But what, and it is a lot down to local residents and the neighbourhoods to actually carry on with that identity, which is seen as, as important to people. What we're talking about here is obviously the reorganisation of boundaries in how local government delivers services. And I was, I remember right at the beginning, the devolution agenda and looking at the combined mayoral authorities. So I think our job is to, is, is where Rutland and its residents sit within that in terms of the voice and unlocking the benefits of that, the potential and the opportunities that come, come with that. Looking at those, um, the different proposals, I mean, the thing that struck me, they weren't, they weren't directly comparable. Each of the proposals put forward its own case against the other ones, using the figures and the cost savings that were presumably drawn from the same basic information but came to different conclusions, um, about the savings. So, uh, Bob Powell, uh, very much a numbers person, I realise that we're living in a very uncertain world and those, those cases can be made from, from, from those, um, the, the same basic figures. I think even I noticed in the, um, I think it was the Leicestershire ones, even that, that when they were counteracting the North City South proposal, they came up with slightly different population figures as well, which was also interesting. But I think the North City South seemed to me to be, you know, put together in terms of that financial information that was a bit rather lacking in the others, which we, we were talking about. And to me, it's where Rutland sits in that, looking at overall map about do you divide it into two, divide it into three? And to me, it's the, having those three equitable areas, to me, makes the most logical sense in terms of Rutland's overall voice through those areas into the bigger picture. And yeah, so from, from that sort of just overall point of view, um, as I say, I, I, I do believe there are, there are efficiency savings to be made in local government, how you do, as, as councillor Johnson has said. That's more about systems and processes and streamlining and delivery rather than just, just size. And I think we, as the rugby houses in the next year, 18 months, and with the new, whatever, whatever organisation we become part of, the shadows, our role is to, um, really embed the good things about Rutland in whatever structure we have. And on the point, we, we could say, well, it's not our decision anyway, let's just leave the Secretary of State to make that decision. We could sit back and do that, but I don't think that's the right thing to do. I mean, even if whatever we decide is not the decision that's been made, I feel that we as councillors have a responsibility to endorse one of those proposals.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else want to come back? No.
Um, I think I would like to sum up this part by reiterating the thanks that many of you have given to the work of the Task and Finish Group and the members last night who were making very thoughtful comments about the three proposals before us and the process we had to go through. I agree with you and the Task and Finish Group's work, I think, was very helpful at the debate last night. I think we also, I also want to support what some of you said about the work our officers have done. And I think one of the reasons that the North City South proposal looks more rounded is because of the input from our officers. Our own section 151 officer was leading on the financial work. The city and the council brought in external consultants to do their finances. And I think it showed, I think it showed the difference between somebody who can add up sums and somebody who understands what that money is meant to be spent on, basically. And I think why in the North City South proposal, the clarity of what the neighbourhoods would be was there simply because it's not a million miles from what we're doing in Rutland. And we were able to, or our officers were able to explain to their officer colleagues what that looked like. And I was able to explain to the district leaders how it was subtly different from some of the work they had done recently and in the past within their communities. And therefore it needed to be more rounded. Unfortunately, we didn't get the same opportunities in the future, but never mind. Many of you have talked about financial sustainability and have touched on what would happen if we stayed as we are. Well, how long's the stream, who's got crystal ball, whatever other, uh, and reason you might want to use. I think the reality is, we have seen, on my time on the councils, when I came on the council in 2011, a consistent reduction in our government grant year on year. And the ad hoc grants that become available, whether we bid for them or they're given to us, are becoming smaller and smaller as well for us. And as a consequence, our council tax has been going up and is now just under 80% and I've spent. If that trend continues, it won't be long before it hits 100%. And I think we need to bear that in mind. And it's not because we're not well-run, it's not because we don't have good services, it's because we don't have a lot of deprivation, which is one of the triggers for government funding. And in part, it's, it is an economy of scale question. We don't have the economies of scale that some other authorities do have. And so being, being in a bigger grouping would be advantageous. And indeed, I had begun informal discussions with a number of neighbouring authorities well before the White Paper was published, to see whether there was any appetite for Rutland to grow. So it was something that we were aware of. I certainly wouldn't have moved at the pace though the government has pushed us in by any stretch of the imagination, but we are where we are. I think though, we have to recognise that we are not the only people discussing this. All the other district councils in Leicestershire will be looking at these three proposals, as will of course the city and the county. The city and the county are in relatively easy position. Whatever they think they want, that's what they'll go for. The districts, we've got to get everybody to agree. And there could well be, during their equivalent of our cabinet meeting, be some amendments, adjustments that they want to make. And so in a moment, I'm going to propose an, an additional recommendation. But before I do that, because it's been proposed and seconded, recommendation 1.3.1, Cabinet to approve proposal for local government reorganisation most strongly needs established criteria and provides the best means of ensuring long-term financial sustainability and high-quality sustainable public services for Rutland. From what I have heard, you are all saying the North City South proposal is the proposal that most strongly meets the criteria. Can I say, shall I answer, confirm that is unanimous? And therefore, I think 1.3.1, we have agreed to the proposal on North City South. And 1.3.2, this is where I'm going to slightly amend it, if I may, is for Cabinet to endorse the proposal for submission to Secretary of State. But add into that as an amendment, delegate authority to the Chief Executive in consultation with the leader of the council to continue working with the Leicestershire district and borough councils to agree and to finalise the documents and then submit the final proposal to the Secretary of State, the housing communities and local government prior to 28th of November 2025 deadline. Can I have a second of that? Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Now, it is an amendment 1.3.2 that is added on. Does anyone want to speak tonight? Councilor Powell.
Thank you. The deadline is next Friday, so there is one week in which to make any amendments. I'm very concerned that we might have, what amendments might be proposed, may they all have to be agreed by all the authorities? I'm assuming, and I'm a bit uncomfortable, that the draft proposal that everyone has seen, as everyone's looked at last night and today, might be changed. I accept it might be not substantive, but then there's a bit of a subjective judgement about what is substantive. So in principle, okay, there are, you know, spelling mistakes or whatever that might need to be changed, but I'm not comfortable with any further changes to it. And I don't see practically how that can be achieved within a week, if you've got to get all the districts to agree to that as well. Thank you.
The district leaders are meeting on Wednesday and they will have all had their cabinet meetings by then. And I'm quite concerned that one of them, who did ask, might come up with a, well, can't we move this section to here? Or we would want that moved there. And without this, without delegating authority to me, prejudicial to the Chief Executive, who will be at the same meeting, um, that we won't actually be able to approve anything either like that. And so it's in order to facilitate what's going through. I've heard what everybody said, both here and last night. And I think I understand that the thrust of it is keep it what we see. But I'm very, very worried that we won't be able to sign up to it because there might be some, what I would consider a minor change, but I appreciate other people might not. I'm certainly not going to agree to anything that's substantially different or changes the emphasis. But I would remind you that, uh, our officers have had a significant role in shaping this. And they wouldn't let me do anything that changed what had sat by their professional judgement, I'm sure. Councilor Thompson.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, can I just suggest, I'm, I'm mainly supportive of that suggestion. But given Councilor Powell's, um, point and, uh, which we did plannily discuss earlier as well, is it worth putting, inserting something like, without changing the overall meaning or something like that to make sure that, that it's quite clear that, that what we're talking about are minor amendments, not major amendments? Do, do we think, do we think it does that already?
Uh, I'll call in the Chief Executive on this point, please.
It was, you'll point out that we shouldn't substantially change, it's obviously not intended to substantially change. But I think it's important that any changes are transparent. So, and all we'll do is perform any, uh, sign up by the leader of the cabinet so that you can change, uh, the nature of any changes if changes are required. Be all right, mostly, I assume it would be changing incentives in a greater sense or changes for anything.
Or making sure that Rutland council has capital letters for the R C to see.
Sorry. I don't know.
Councilor Powell, are you content with that explanation?
To a certain degree, yes, I, I obviously trust that those terms of debate, I'm just, it's just from the point of view of having had that document. And it's obviously, there's been a lot of work on it, there's been a lot of discussions between, between the various leaders of the, of the authorities and the officers that actually, I would have hoped that tweaks about capital letters would have been done by now. And if we, but I wouldn't want anything to be a deal breaker between the various authorities. But I, I would, I would infinitely prefer if we've got what we've got and that goes in, because I think it's important, if we've had a document, we've looked at it, okay, it won't be that effect because there will be things that need to be changed. But then actually, if, if, I would, I would actually prefer that we, we, you know, stick at, stick at where we are. I'm not gonna, if we, if we need to put that in just to protect ourselves, but I would hope that there would be, I would, yeah, I don't, I don't see why at this stage, with a week to go, that we, that we aren't confident in this, in this, in this, in this, in this final document.
I think essentially we are confident in the final document, but we are aware that there are a number of partners in this exercise. And we need to give ourselves the ability to respond to whatever might come out from our partners. And that's really essentially what this is doing.
Yes, I agree, as I say, well, i- i- if somebody wants to make a minor change and that is, that is important to them and then we accept that that's a minor change. I think it's more from the other districts that, um, who want to make sure that we're all aligned if they, if they are supporting this proposal as well.
I, I, I am fairly confident that none of them want to make anything that's a substantive change. They will have to set that before this point in time. All that we've been doing for the last All that we've been doing for the last two months, or its huge job, but what we've been doing for the last two months is ensuring that the document actually reflects what we were saying earlier in the year. And that's quite a difficult process, but it's been through a number of iterations. It's just I want to make sure that we're not tripped up at the last hurdle because I don't have the power to say, yes, you can do this with the chief executive, obviously. So this has been proposed, I'll read it now again. Delegate authority to the chief executive in consultation with the leader of the council to continue working with the Leicestershire district and borough councils to agree and finalise the document and then submit the final proposal to the Secretary of State for housing communities and local government prior to the twenty eighth of November, twenty twenty five deadline. That's been proposed and seconded. It follows on from one point three point two, which was also proposed and seconded. So it's a amendment to that, an addition to that. Can I see all those in favour, please?
I'll see yours, Jo.
Now, before we close the meeting, I'd like, sorry, is there a motion? Okay, so the substantive motion is, for Cabinet to endorse that proposal, i.e. North City South, for submission to Secretary of State and delegates' authority, et cetera. That is now the substantive motion. All those in favour, please?
See you, Ms. Jo.
Now, before, I'm, sorry.
Sorry, Jo, can I just clarify, are we encompassing the letter with that?
That's what I'm just saying. Before I close the meeting, I have heard comments about a letter. I don't want to send a letter with our submission because I think that will muddy the waters. I would be more than happy and indeed would be keen to send a letter to the Secretary of State separately from the submission and to make that letter public, so everybody knows what we're saying. Are you content with that commitment from the cabinet? Yeah, now it's all round, so I don't need a motion to that. Okay. In which case, I close the meeting at fourteen fifty.
Fourteen fifty.
Fourteen forty one, seven hundred.